All right, good evening. Welcome to the Winthrop School Committee meeting November 13th, 2017 at 6:00 PM in the multipurpose room of the William P. Gorman Fort Banks School.
There you go.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in thy nation under thy command, with due diligence, the ready and justice law. Thank you. This meeting will be recorded and will be televised at a later time. Ms. Sanders, would you please call the roll? Mr. Vecchia.
Present.
Mr. Capobianco.
Present.
Mr. Samford.
Yes.
Mr. Holden, Dr. Callis, Mr. Perrin.
Here.
Ms. Sullivan.
Here.
Tonight, we're going to start with delegates and visitors. We have the recipients of the John and Abigail Adams Awards. Superintendent Howard, would you get us started?
Sure. So first of all, congratulations to the 29 students from Winthrop High School that have received a scholarship, the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. That means that you have tested either advanced in one of the categories, maybe even all three, and proficient in either ELA, math, or science. So we would like you to come up and receive your certificate. And this certificate gets a little bit more formal when you get closer to graduation. At that time, it'll get something a little bit more formal that you'll be able to share with one of the state colleges of your choice, which that is where you decide to go, and that will entitle you to free tuition at that particular school. So for all the parents and grandparents and family members out there, it's really a nice honor to be able to receive that. Tuition at state schools is just the straight tuition. They sneak those fees in behind you that you will have to pay on your own, but it is still a nice chunk of change off of the tuition. So congratulations to all 29 of you students. With my lovely assistant, Mr. Krabi, we're going to have you come up and we'll congratulate you. I will give you your certificates that your parents can stick on the fridge and the walk through and if you guys would just like to congratulate me after I go through. So, Mr. Krabi, as soon as everybody gets ready.
You'd better if you go full level.
I was going to say, do you want to go on the phone so we know because I'm quiet?
Okay, so first up, we have Joshua Kudrow. Next, we have Shannon Buckley. Jessica Martin. And last but not least, Samuel Zicello.
So next on the agenda is the Miller Field Committee. We have Councilor LeTieri, Dave Gerard, and Vinnie Crossman here tonight with us. Welcome to give us an update on what's happening in the field. Sorry, you guys look in the dark over there.
All right.
Wish we had better lighting, but so, go ahead.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be back in front of this committee, although last time it was kind of rushed in haste. But I'm glad that we're back and we have good news for you and good progress. So, you know, I don't want to go back on all the stuff they had already told you. I know your time is pretty valuable here, so I'd rather kind of just give you an update of where we are now, where we've came in the past few weeks, and then take you into what they're going to plan on doing for the last few days of construction. The good news is, is that we're in good shape. We're in very good shape. Skansker and Gilbane have done an excellent job of keeping the project on track, on time, and on budget. They are very, very confident that we will be ready to go for Thanksgiving Day. There are some minor issues that are being worked out, but there's nothing that's insurmountable at this point to have the game at the field. So I just kind of want to take you through each piece of the field so you know what's going on and what's been done lately and what we're going to be doing in the near future. The turf is complete. They are going to be doing performance testing on the turf to ensure that everything is laid out the way it's supposed to. From our understanding, that is pretty straightforward and based on the people that installed it and that kind of thing, there should be no issue there. Everything is put into the turf, so all of the organic infill, again, we didn't use the Krupp rubber infill that causes a lot of concern. We use an organic product. And from everything that we've gotten back, the field is in, the turf itself is in very good shape and ready to go. For the past few weeks, they've been, you've seen them raking it. You've seen the brown material on the top that gets raked in, and that's what causes all the fibers to stand up properly and reduce the impact when you're playing on the field. And they'll continue to do that for the next week, continue to rake that into the soil and move the machines around. That's not anything different than what would be done by our own maintenance staff when we take over the field and we have to add fill to it. It's a normal course of maintenance. So that's the status of the turf. The turf is basically 100% ready to go. Going on to the track. The track's surface itself, we have about 250 linear feet of track surface left to be placed, which isn't much. They're going to be completing that tomorrow once the rain clears, and that'll be all done. Our construction committee has made a decision that we are not going to paint the track this year. We're going to leave it black, which is not something that you can't use. It's just going to be black until the spring, and we know that the paint will take onto the rubber surface. We are going to stripe it so that it can be used fully in the spring, but we are going to bring them back in the springtime after the track season is over and let them paint it and re-stripe it again. The good part about this is it will extend our warranty by another six months for the track. And it actually, personally, I like it because I like the fact that they're coming back. So any issues that we have with the track, we're going to have them back on site. They can deal with those issues in the spring that we realize. We don't anticipate any problems with the track at all, but the painting will be done in the spring once the weather gets better. But again, fully usable. The track like that is in place at Chelsea High School. If you go by and look, you'll see a black track. It's exactly what we're getting. We're just not painting the surface until the springtime. With regards to fencing and site security, the eight-foot chain link fence that goes around the perimeter is expected to be completed by Thursday. You'll see most of it's up now. They just have to lower it down and attach it. That's a one-day project. The four-foot chain link fence that goes around the field itself is also all installed. It just needs to be lowered to grade. The reason why it's up about a foot off is so they can fill in the track underneath it. But they'll lower that down on Thursday once the, once the track is all laid out. The wood guardrail was completed today around the field, so any of the wood guardrail that you see that separates the field itself from the golf course, that is all complete. The decorative iron fence will be completed on Monday and Tuesday of next week, 11:21. The footings are going in starting tomorrow, and they'll have that complete by next week. The concession building, the foundation for that, will be surrounded in fence at the beginning of next week. So that small lip that you see when you go by where the building will be, they're going to move the current construction fence into a box to box that off. Let's see here. Certificate of Occupancies are going to be issued most likely on Thursday. We're waiting for the affidavits from Woodward and Curran, who was the architect, to sign off, and the engineer to sign off on everything that's been done. This has been coordinated with the town's inspectors in the past few weeks, so it's been kind of fluid, and they've been working on it together, so it's all set to go. Just have to get that signed off on. The electrical is one issue that we still, we still have and that we have a plan to deal with. National Grid was finally on-site today after lengthy delays. If there's anyone that I don't like after this process is National Grid, I think they were very unfair to our project and to our town, but I'll save that for another day. National Grid said they will have crews on-site tomorrow to place the pole. We are concerned that even if they place the pole tomorrow, that they will not have crews back to reconnect the wires to the pole. So we're kind of at their mercy when it comes to that, so we've decided to hold off and use the generator that is connected right now, the town's generator, which is a very reliable, quality generator, to run the game. There's minimal things that are going to be powered by that generator. It's going to be the scoreboard, the sound system, and the lift. Other than that, there's no other power needed. So for that day, we'll have an elevator mechanic on-site as required by code, and we will also have an electrician on-site in case there's any issues. But I'm very confident in the generator that the town has. Viking Pride used it for our event and ran everything off of it at Miller Field, and we had zero issues. And I don't anticipate that generator causing us any issues at all on that day. And you can go by and see it now. It's all hooked up on the right-hand side of the street, right across from the driveway of the school. It's that big generator. It actually could probably power three-quarters of the school itself. We're only going to use it for a fraction of what it can produce. The landscaping on the field, you'll notice that there are some areas where there's grass supposed to be placed. That's another item we're going to hold off until the spring. We're going to place loom there now, cover it with mats, and hold off until the spring. That's similar to what we did with a lot of the high school project. We brought in the seed afterwards, once the spring rolled around, and did that. So the majority of things are complete. The bleachers are complete. The paving around the field is complete. The bus parking lot was supposed to be completed today on the Veterans Roadside. So we're in very good shape, I think, for Thanksgiving Day. And I think that the community is going to have a field that they can be very proud of, and I'm very excited to be able to have the kids down there. And they've already kind of got a sneak peek. Some of the seniors got out there, and I had a chance to go out, which was great, and thanked some of the workers, so they really liked that. And I think we're in, ready to go.
I have a question about the sidewalks. When I drove by tonight, it looked like the sidewalks on both sides were being replaced.
Yep, so sidewalks on both sides are being replaced.
So do you know the timeline for?
Yep. Go ahead.
They will be done this weekend, I think, Thursday, Friday?
Thursday, Friday, yeah.
And you'll have sidewalks on both sides this?
And that's new.
I was excited to see that because I didn't realize that they were on the other side of the street.
Yeah.
So is that a new sidewalk?
That's a new sidewalk. So it was, I mean, it was a pseudo-sidewalk.
Yeah.
It was kind of an asphalt sidewalk that had crumbled over the years, and wasn't much left to it, to be honest, so.
Is there parking on that side still when the sidewalks are completed or no?
Which side? On the field side?
On the baseball side.
On the field?
Like the school side?
No.
No, I think the town has plans about how they want to handle that parking. It's kind of out of the jurisdiction of our committee.
The way the orange cone, not cones, the orange barrels were lined up, and it was dark, I couldn't see. It looked like some of the spots might be missing.
My understanding is they're only going to allow parking on one side, but I think that's a separate. I think the town's public safety committee is going to handle that, and I'm not sure that they've made that decision.
Okay. But the sidewalks will be done before the game?
Yep.
Have you heard from the accessibility committee in terms of inspecting?
We have. So the accessibility committee is coming on Wednesday. We've done our own inspections through Gilbane and some of the, and flat that's down there measuring slopes and that kind of thing, and we don't anticipate that there'll be a problem with inspections. They could come in and say, "We need to add four handicap spots onto Cross Street." We don't know that, but if they do, we could do it. Again, the parking outside of the stadium is kind of out of our jurisdiction, so, you know, we'll do what they need us to do to make that happen. I don't think there's anything that the handicap folks can present to us that's not something that we can fix in a couple of days. But we have checked slopes. We continue to check slopes to make sure the slopes and the angles are correct, and all of, the bleachers are all handicap accessible from the manufacturer.
The engineer signs an affidavit at the end of this project for accessibility, so he's responsible on his stamp to say, "All the slopes meet it. There's access to everywhere that needs to be per code." So we're very confident that we can do that.
I think the concern was that they would be able to come out. What we heard from the town manager at the last meeting was that, would they be able to get there? So it sounds like you have an appointment with them on Wednesday?
They're coming on Wednesday.
Perfect. Ms. Perrin.
I was just wondering what the town manager's position was now that he's been briefed on this. Is he going to sign off and accept it or?
We can't speak for the town manager, but we feel pretty comfortable that he will, you know, that's up to him. And whether it be a full certificate of occupancy or a temporary certificate of occupancy or partial certificate of occupancy, you know, to sign a certificate of occupancy, you want substantial completion of the project. Substantial completion is basically 99% of the project. It's a $10 million project, so basically, it's $100,000 of work left. We feel there are two things left to be done. There's going to be the final connection of the electricity and to paint the track, which is well inside that $100,000, so that it will be 99%, at least 99% of completion. Very similar to when we did the high school not too long ago. We signed over to the town, we opened the school. Gilbane had an office in that school for probably six months doing punch list stuff and things like that. The punch list here is going to be minuscule compared to what was at the high school, but there will be bits and pieces to do, but it will be substantially completed.
Did we get an opinion from the town's attorney on that? I know that the town manager was going to reach out to them to see.
I think the town's attorney was noticed, was in discussions today.
Okay.
Getting up to speed on the project and.
Just wanted to make sure we don't miss anything where we had a meeting last time around and we're all on the same page.
Mm-hmm. I think also on accessibility, there's been some questions on parking, and, you know, Veterans Road will be available to repack. There were questions on the ditch. Is the ditch going to be available to have a passerby that's fully functional, so that will be used to get from Veterans Road to Cross Street?
I just have some questions about the finances of playing the game on Thanksgiving. Because the bathrooms won't be completed, we'll need to rent some porta-potties that day. Can that come out of the Miller Field budget, or does that have to come out of the school budget?
So we'd have to, we'd have to bring it to the committee. Myself personally, I'm in favor of paying for it out of that budget, but I don't know what my other committee members think. Probably could think different than I do, but I will support that.
Yeah, I'd like to put in a formal request that this is sort of a transition.
We thought you had this one, you'd find us the RIS money for those.
There we go.
Oh, thank you.
They said about $600 is what we were told.
That's correct. And then the other cost that we may be looking at is increased security because of areas of the field that we don't want people to be accessing, extra police detail and so forth.
Where's that that can't be accessed?
The, around the foundation that's going to be fenced off, I think we're looking that we're going to need extra security or police detail so that kids aren't climbing fences or people aren't accessing, like the unfinished bathhouse.
That's the only area in the ticket booth that's going to be, but it is going to be fenced off, just like the area is now, but we will look into that.
I mean, they could climb a fence and jump into the golf course. I don't see the difference between that and.
There's a four-foot fence separating the track from the people. They could be climbing that, you know, it's like.
So that's why we're hiring increased security for this game?
No, it's there forever, the four-foot fence, right? So if your kid's climbing that fence, it's the same as the other fence.
It's the same as it was at the old, the little area, the grassy area.
You shouldn't be, they shouldn't be climbing fences.
Okay. I had the understanding that we'd be hiring increased police detail for this because of the weight, condition of the field.
We usually have increased details anytime there's a Revere with her game on Thanksgiving. There's usually extra police.
Well, Revere actually sends people here as well.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I think the superintendent has a plan for that morning anyway.
We do.
Relative to staff and so forth.
We do. We have a full plan for staffing, and Matt Serino and Matt Krabi and myself have met probably about maybe 25 times to go over the plan and revamp it. And looking at the cost of the toilets, looking at the cost of increased security, we have put some parameters on sort of simplifying the day because of the amount of activity we think we'll have and making sure we have enough staff. So I'll talk to Matt a little bit more. We were anticipating what the gate receipts were going to look like. We're not 100% there yet in determining what that might look like to help maybe offset some things.
Ms. Perrin.
My final couple of questions. Is the town going to approve this by tomorrow? I think that was the deadline for the city Revere to have their people ready for the game.
I think Revere's deadline is Wednesday.
Wednesday, okay.
Wednesday.
And I think the certificate of occupancy is coming to the town on Thursday, so. Did Councilor Sanford have it?
Yeah. Just a couple of other incidentals. I mean, the elevator, the licensed elevator operator will be a cost that will be incurred as well as the electrician, so I think.
Gilbane is. I think we feel pretty confident that Gilbane will pick up the cost of the elevator operator.
We're in a meeting today and I was still.
And I believe we'll have a volunteer, a pro bono.
We have a pro bono electrician.
Pro bono electrician that will be here.
Yeah.
Gilbane said they're going to eat the cost. Gilbane's going to eat the cost of the elevator mechanic.
Right.
The town won't see any of that cost.
And we were on a conference call with the town manager today, and he had some of these same questions. He feels fairly confident, but until the ADA comes, the state ADA agency comes in, the sidewalks report, as Vinnie had said, that, you know, a lot of this has been signed off so far, and Wednesday is the deadline, so I think everybody's hopeful that this is going to go through and feels fairly confident that it will, so.
Ms. Capobianco.
Yep. I just really want to personally thank you, Mr. Crossman, Mr. Fabiano, and your committee for the campaign that you guys ran and the work that you've done on this committee. The town's very lucky to have all your volunteer service. We really appreciate all the hard work you put in for this.
Any questions?
So there's nothing we have to do at this point.
In terms of what?
We have no vote on this at all. It's whether the town actually accepts it. That's very true.
Yeah, and it's also MIA rules that it's really the superintendent's decision where games are played, so it's not really a school committee vote anyway. I think that the superintendent has done her due diligence along with working with you guys, and the town manager, you know, will work together like he has been to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything you guys wanted to add or?
No, we actually have a seven o'clock meeting with our engineers and construction folks to make sure everything is going as it should, so we're going to jump to that.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right. We had an email from Mr. Michael O'Mara dated October 3rd, 2017. He actually came to me and I forwarded it to Superintendent Howard. Mr. O'Mara had some concerns about our security around our internet that specifically devices that students are able to use during the school day, and if we had proper and adequate security around what websites these students, any student was able to access during the school day, even by accident that they might be able to access. I right away spoke to Superintendent Howard, who had already had some correspondence from Mr. O'Mara, and I believe she's going to have some more information in her superintendent's report this afternoon, or this evening, right?
Mm-hmm.
Next on the agenda, we have public comment. Is there any public comment tonight? Next on the agenda, we have the minutes from October 3rd, 2017. They were in our packet for review. Their motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
By Mr. Vecia, second by Mr. Perrin. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, abstentions? Motion passes. The minutes are approved. Thank you. Next, we have financial. We have a warrant, SVW 18-8, in the amount of $248,828.17. We have a payroll warrant of SVW 18-6 in the amount of $639,835.26. I'll make a motion to approve both together. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Perrin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any discussion on the motion? Sorry. Nope. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, abstentions? Thank you. Motion passes. We have some budget transfers in front of us tonight. Superintendent Howard, do you want to point out anything specific on these budget transfers or?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just the general transfers. As you know, when you begin the school year, we open up the school year filling some positions that had either been vacated over the summer or folks that might be on maternity leave or paternity leave, daily medical leave, things as such. So we're working with Susan. Susan doing the majority, if not every bit of the work, to take those new hires and compare them to what we had budgeted for prior to July reopening of school. And so what we would like to do in keeping with our plan to transfer money and even out the lines to make them truly reflective of what we're spending day to day, Susan has taken the time to really go through each one and break it down, make sure that it's the accurate salary reflected in the budget. And that will also help us as we begin, the beginning of December, to start our FY19 planning, so we will have the true actual salaries for each staff member. So as you can see throughout, there's increases and decreases in the budget that pretty much match up to each other throughout both pages.
Right, and they mostly have to do with positions?
Correct.
Yeah. I'll make. I'll make a motion to approve the budget transfers. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Beck. Any discussion on the budget transfers? All in favor, say aye. Aye. opposed, abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you. Buildings and grounds, we have a couple of requests here. We have a request from the Dance Studio and Parks and Recreation for basketball for the Neil Shapiro Center for Performing Arts and the RFG Cummings Gymnasium for actually 2018.
Motion to take them together.
Yes, Mr. Perrin. I'll second that. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. opposed, abstentions? Thank you. Buildings and grounds requests are approved. We'll move down to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Howard?
Thank you. As you alluded to earlier, the correspondence we had from a parent regarding internet security and our students' access to the internet is something that is in the forefront of all that we do with our technology. But as a parent, I fully understood this particular parent's concern about being able to access various websites. So not being as technology epped as most 10-year-olds are, I deferred to retrofit, who is our technology contractor, and asked them to go to their IT department and take a look at how they were managing our security. And there's all kinds of terminology about firewalls and backing in and breaking through and terminology that is not familiar to me. So I asked the experts to really take a good look at it and from each one of our buildings' perspectives to see if we were tight or if we needed to increase our security or add anything to our system to ensure our students' safety. So they have done that as part of their contract and at no extra cost to the school district. And they have also provided me with a written update. My plan is to make sure that that is in the hands of the principals as well as responding to the one parent we had. And we will also put something up on our website so that parents can go on and be, to see the level of security that we do have. It's changing every day. Through retrofit, they are able to monitor our school's website as well as any websites that are accessed from our, from our schools, whether they're by teachers or by students. And so there's all kinds of internal walls within the system that do prevent us from, our students or even adults, from breaking through those walls to access inappropriate material. It is, nothing is foolproof as I was told, and there is a way around just about anything. The beauty of having retrofit in a contracted agency onboard with us is that they look at that multiple, multiple times per day through their systems. It's not one individual sitting sort of behind a screen doing that, but it's, the technology itself stops things from, from getting through to our students. So I was happy with, not only with their response, but how timely they were when I called them with that concern and how deeply they looked into everything and then came back outside with the town manager and myself and explained it in terms that I could actually understand, which is helpful so that when we want to explain it to our parents, we're able to do that so that they can also understand. So I thank that particular parent for his diligence and correspondence and trying to protect the safety of our students. And we welcome that at any time that a parent has a concern. There are sometimes we don't know that parents are concerned. So unless they call us or send us an email, we wouldn't otherwise know. So I encourage parents to do that, but I feel reassured that we are in good hands with retrofit.
So at this time, you wouldn't recommend any change to our policy for internet use or internet presence in the school district?
I would not. And I, they, they also, as did I, looked at other schools' websites to see what type of policies they had in there. They are very standard in terms of the policy itself. It's, the intricacy is within the contract of the agencies that you subcontract out to to make sure that they are continually monitoring. And we do have that as part of our contract. So I would not be recommending any change.
Okay, thank you.
A few other little items on my superintendent's report. I had a great meeting with the class presidents this week. I was able to, through Mr. Crombie, meet with Ava Bettino, Michaela Norris, Joe Murray and Jenna Dorr and just sit down in a, in a private office with them and ask them what they thought about with their public schools, specifically with their high school. How they thought things were going, sort of just to throw your shoulders down and let me have it kind of day. And they were, they were very articulate. I was very proud of the way they were able to advocate for themselves, speak about the things that they thought were going well, assuring me that they would get back to me, email me, shoot me a text or, or call the superintendent's office if they felt that there was something that they really wanted to talk about that couldn't wait. I plan to meet with them again. I wanted them to think about some of the questions that I asked them. I asked them the same six questions that I ask most community members when I speak with them so that I can get a sense and a feel for what they think is going well, where they think we may need some improvements, thoughts about the curriculum at the high school, thoughts about the course offerings at the high school, things they'd like to see, thoughts they have as seniors on their way out. They were excited to know that the juniors and seniors will come here and report out to the school committee about the exciting things that are happening in your junior year and certainly in that senior year as we build up to special events like the prom and graduation. So it was really neat just to sit down with them and have a full-out conversation and hear what they had to say. So great kids. Couple of other little items. We've made a great deal of progress on a staff handbook we're working on. We had one years and years ago here and we wanted to really memorialize that a little bit deeper. So some of the principals are working on that. That's coming along nicely. Updating a 504 manual, so 504 accommodations, which is a civil right for people with disabilities who don't necessarily need an individualized education plan or special education. So this is for not only students, but adults and staff members can have 504 plans if it's necessary. So we wanted to put together a manual that principals and other administrative staff could have in their hands as a reference guide for that. So we have some assistant principals working on that. And the Miller Field Use Manual. Matt Crombie, myself and Matt Serino have spent some time looking at use manuals of like-sized districts that have built fields similar to our new project, looking at how they conduct their maintenance, who they have do it, how, if, if they rent out their field, how do they do that? Is it a nonprofit rate versus a for-profit rate? So we've spent some time looking at probably about six or seven different schools. So we have a rough draft version of a manual. Once that field is turned back to us, the game is on. No pun intended. So we need to have something in place so that when we do open it up for use as well as our own student athletes, that there is a reference guide for that as well. So we'll be presenting that to the committee once that is complete for approval. And classroom visits, I, classroom visits are going well. I had the opportunity to spend some time at the middle school and the high school this past week, sitting in on a phys ed class, watching some really competitive play in the middle of the day. Gorman Fort Banks, I was lucky enough to be here when the fifth grade came over, a bunch of fifth graders, to read to the second graders and do some writing with the second graders. And that was really neat to watch, the interaction between the second graders, looking up to the fifth graders as these really big people. And the fifth grader's walking through the hallway as if they, it was a million years ago that they were here. And then Ms. Pearson spoke and it reminded them that it wasn't that long ago that they were here as she asked them to get into ninja mode in the hallway and have some quiet voices so we didn't just, you know, disrupt the students in the hallway. So that was, that was fun to watch. Little bit of professional development, the tourniquet training. Thank you to the, the fire department for providing high school staff with tourniquet training. People were a little bit nervous about it at first, but the, the feedback is that they loved it. And we now have some of our other schools asking for that same tourniquet training. So I thank the chief for allowing that to happen. And I watched some reciprocal teaching and Google Classroom presentations over at the Cummings School. I was able to sit in on some of that PD, which was neat to watch. And last, on my list is Rock of All Ages is coming up on the 16th, 17th and 18th. I have interrupted Ms. Kalinda's classroom about 86 times, walking into the Black Box Theater with folks who have asked to come and see our school and to show it off. She has been more than gracious in allowing me to come in. And now the kids don't stop. At first, they were like, ooh, a visitor, and they kind of stopped class. Now they, last two times I've been in there, they haven't stopped. Either I'm less popular or they're getting used to it. So that was, that, that play is coming up, the 16th, 17th and 18th, and tickets are now on sale. And that is all I have.
Great.
Could you do a question?
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Perrin.
I, I, from your report, you said they did tourniquet training. I know that a while back, we were talking about that Quickplot, the product, and getting people trained in. And there was some kind of grant that we were looking at. Has that come through? Do we know?
I don't know. That was before my time.
It was before your time.
It must have been. But I have not heard about that, but I can double check that for sure. Was it through the chief?
Meredith was, yeah.
Oh, it was Meredith.
Really presented that a while back.
Okay.
Please come through, financial.
Not, not come through.
I can double check it though.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Okay, if you want to move into personnel?
Yes. So for personnel, at this time, no appointments. We do have, and no resignation. We do have one retirement, Anna Maria Toddell will be retiring. And we thank her for her many years of service, 24 to be exact, at the end of this school year. Postings, we have part-time high school secretary position to be filled, and that is a position that was vacated by the staff member who took over at the guidance office. So that position is posted. We have no leaves of absence at this time.
So this part-time office is still available?
That is still available.
All right. Thank you.
And I believe that is it.
All right. Under new business, tonight I'm regretful to announce that we have a resignation from Dr. Laura Callis on the school committee. She and her husband have actually bought a house in another community. And so because of that, she's resigning her position. So what that means for us is that we are, what happens when someone resigns in the middle of their term is that we would accept letters of interest from people in this community who would like to take that position. And I would like people to send letters of interest to Ms. Hames at the school department. And her email address is phames, H-A-M-E-S, at winthrop.k12.m-a.us. I think it would be nice to have, not necessarily a resume, but some sort of background and reasons that you'd like to be on the, the school committee. And then what happens is the town council and the school committee have a joint meeting to nominate and vote on the new member and to appoint the new member to finish the term, which is for two more years. So I would propose that we have that meeting on Monday, November 27th, which is two weeks from tonight. We already have a school committee meeting planned that night. So if we could have a joint meeting with the town council and the school committee at 6:00 and then start the school committee meeting at 6:30, that would give anyone in the community who's interested in that position some time to get us your information. And we'd like to have that information by Tuesday, the 21st of November, by 10:00 a.m. because that would give Ms. Hames time to put that email out to all of us, the town council and the school committee, to review anyone who's interested. So is there any questions or? Does that work for people to, to have it before our next school committee meeting? Yeah. President Samper, do you believe that?
Yeah.
We could get some of the town council members here on that night if we give them up notice?
We have a meeting scheduled 21st, so 27th is the following week. I think we're okay.
Okay. Yes.
My only question is, according to the charter, is there a timeline involved in this?
No.
No timeline, okay.
And there's, oh, sorry.
I was just going to say, I feel as though we probably should look at changing that charter the next time it comes around because it's a super number of council over school committee where it's our committee. We actually, if the town council voted as a group, would override our own committee as to choosing a replacement. So I think we have to look at that as we go forward and kind of find out a better formula and make that happen. Just a little more fairness.
The charter is, is a little vague, I would say, on how the procedure related to this policy goes. It only says that the town council and the school committee vote together. There's no timeline, there's not even actually a posting regulation, like we could just do it tonight. You know what I mean? So I feel like we, I would not like to do it that way. I would like it to be posted in the transcript. I would like it to be posted in the community so people have a chance to, to put their letter of interest in. Yes, Mr. Cap Bianco?
Yeah, my only thoughts on that is if, what if we were to have this vote on the 21st? That way, the 28th, that new member will be able to serve on this committee and it speeds up the process a little bit. I think that's still enough time to have everything posted and.
My concern is that that's Thanksgiving week and my concern is that we wouldn't get enough members here to, to vote.
No, I agree.
I feel like it's a busy week and.
So if this is before the meeting anyhow, would that person be able to serve on the school committee that night?
I don't see why not.
If we have a town clerk, you had to swear them in, I think we could do it.
Oh, they have to get sworn in, right.
Because then it's going to be, then it's a whole, a two-week process. That's the only way.
So then they would be in the December meeting. That's correct. Yep.
Yeah, you work around that schedule. Yeah, absolutely.
All right. So because of the resignation we did receive, I, Dr. Callis won't be able to serve on the subcommittees that she's been assigned to. So I'd like to appoint, she was on the budget subcommittee. So these subcommittees will all change in January when the new school committee comes around. So, so this is really just for the next six or seven weeks. So the, the budget subcommittee she was on, I'm going to appoint Brian Perrin in her place and I'm actually going to make myself the chairperson of the budget subcommittee. The superintendent evaluation committee she was on, I'm not sure that there's going to be another of those meetings, but I'm, I'm going to put myself in her place for the superintendent evaluation committee. She was also on the superintendent contract negotiation committee. I'm going to ask Mr. Perrin to take her place on that.
Get up a lot of jobs.
The curriculum subcommittee, she was the chairperson of. I'm going to make myself the chairperson along with Bill Holden and Mr. Perrin. I don't, I don't see that we're going to be meeting for the rest of the year on the curriculum, but you never know. She was also on the policy subcommittee. I'm going to be the chair of that committee and Mr. Holden is on that committee and I would ask Mr. Beck to take her spot on that committee. And she was also the person who signed off on payroll every couple of weeks in Susan's office, so I'll be taking care of that obligation. She was also on some bargaining subcommittees. The, the contract negotiations will begin, I would say, when the next school committee, you know, comes around in January. So I'm not going to make any changes to that tonight. I feel like that's going to be all new members when, when that starts. Any questions about that? So under unfinished business, we have the superintendent evaluation.
Yes, Madam Chair. We completed the evaluation. I took everyone's input, that provided input. Thank you for your, your notes. And I basically merged everything together, all of the comments and highlights and so forth. And you have in front of you the final document for consideration of the full committee. Basically, the superintendent's evaluation was, was very good considering she's 90 days on the job roughly, very proficient overall. Proficient evaluation overall, but in certain areas, performance goals, significant progress made in professional practices, student learning, district improvement, instructional leadership, evaluation and data, proficient in those both areas. In management and operations, proficient in all of the areas. And in engagement, we gave exemplary in her area of communication. She does an excellent job in communication. There is a complete paragraph to kind of top-line everything that we reviewed with the superintendent, which is available for public consumption at the office. So this is a, a report. So this is a report to the committee, complete.
Thank you, Mr. Becka. I know this is very time-consuming to put this together and to consolidate everyone's feedback, so thank you for the work you did on this. I'd like to take this evaluation and refer it to the superintendent negotiations committee to go back and look at Ms. Howard's contract for what we've promised her in our current contract, to look at it in terms of an extension. So we'll be looking at planning a subcommittee meeting in the next week or so. Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Just, I would just like to thank people for honestly investing in me and trusting me. So it's truly a pleasure to work here. And it's a pleasure to walk through the hallways of Winthrop Public Schools and see the commitment and the overall strong culture that exists here. So, you know, just a heartfelt thank you for, you know, allowing me the first 90, maybe 100 days that I've been here, and putting your trust and your faith in me to lead the school district. It's an absolute pleasure to work here, and I thank you.
So I actually realize I need to make a motion for that. So a motion to refer the evaluation to the superintendent negotiations subcommittee. Second by Mr. Perrin. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions. Okay, motion passes. Thank you. And we are back to public comment. To any, the shadows?
Like, all over the place.
Okay.
First of all, do you think a meeting coming up soon, that a report on utilities could be given? Last year, you were such a deficit with utilities. I'd just like to know. I know you're only four months in, but maybe we could do that. And when do you think budget subcommittee meetings will be started?
Yeah.
For the budget for the next school year?
I will answer that. Ms. Chavez, Superintendent Howard and I have been talking about the budget ongoing, and I know that we need to have a budget subcommittee meeting, and that will be planned in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. And this is a comment. I don't know what the big rush is into fill Dr. Callis's spot. I mean, this seems like you're just giving it two weeks. Actually, you're only giving people a week to even think about it. And I'm not looking for the job. But you're only giving people, actually, eight days. And I guess they just don't understand what the big rush is. You're not gonna be voting on anything dramatic in the next few weeks?
As far as you know.
Pardon me?
As far as you know.
As far as I know. And so even if you carried it over to your first meeting in December, I don't know. Just a thought.
So any other public comment tonight? Seeing no other public comment, we'll like to move on to public relations. Mr. Becka, do you have anything?
Nope.
Mr. Cat Bianco?
Nope.
Mr. Perrin? I'd like to say that there's a CPAC meeting on Thursday at 6:30 at the Winthrop Middle School. It's the Special Education Parents Advisory Council. Tanya Mandiata is kind of moving this along, and I really want to help her to get as many parents as possible. Even if your child is not on a plan and you just want more information, there's a speaker coming this Thursday night about student and parent rights and responsibilities. And I plan on attending. I think it will be important for as many families as can get there to be there. Again, that's the Thursday at 6:30 at the Winthrop Middle School, the Winthrop CPAC. That's all I have. Professor Samford?
Nothing else.
Professor Samford?
Professor Samford.
Sorry. Anything else? Ms. Howard?
I'm also, thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions. Thank you.